I have figured it out that you have to turn your computer. Otherwise.
Yeah. Okay. Oh, and sorry, one more. We need to turn the camera on. Same thing in the bottom left. There's like a camera.
Good thing you came tonight.
Thank you. Thanks Denise.
I'm learning. I can be your backup now.
Fantastic.
All right. Good evening, everyone. It's o'clock. We can go ahead and get started. Everyone will rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I proudly introduce to you a flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which you stand. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our first order of business this evening at six o'clock is a public hearing to receive input or feedback from the public regarding our existing Tiff district on the official title of the public hearing. I'll just read off. The second amended and restated Pumpkin Town and CMP corridor omnibus municipal development and tax increment financing district development program that we are suggesting be renamed to Pumpkin Town Business Park Omnibus Municipal Development and Tax Increment Financing District Development Program. Um, these documents, the entire application that will be submitted to the state has been posted online for public review or we're in over the course of like this evening in the public hearings, we'll be talking about two different applications, but both of those were posted online. And I'd love to offer up the opportunity for Denise or Tim, if there's any other color we kind of want to add regarding these applications and then we can go back to the public.
Tim, unless you have anything else to say, I think we're good to go.
No, I'm good.
Okay.
The one, the one thing Mallory, I just want to make sure because I looked at the sign today again. Just make sure we are going with Pumpkin Town, one word, not how it's written in the document. Just want to make sure everybody's. It's two in the top, one in the bottom. What we're renaming it to. I just want to make sure that.
In, sorry, in the road, the actual road is one.
Is one. Yes, the sign is one, the road is one.
Yeah, that's what our, our suggestion is. Does anyone from the public or on Zoom have anything they would like to add for the amended Pumpkin Town district?
Hershey Hershup, I live in eleven Sterling Lane, and what we like to say is South Scout Berwick.
Point of order, we just need to open the public hearing. Did you open up the motion to open up the public hearing? And second.
Do we normally have a motion?
Yeah, you have to have a motion.
My fault.
My apologies.
No, my, no, thank you. Thank you. Mine. I, I forgot. I'll go ahead and offer a motion to open the public hearing for the amended Pumpkin Town of Tiff district.
Sure.
Your motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes four zero. We only have four cows on present. Thank you Denise.
You're welcome.
Go ahead.
Anyway, I would just like to say I am greatly in favor of all of the Tiff districts that are being presented. And to speak to this one, really, I think it's been a great venture to the town so far in the development up there to see finding some uses going in. I know the town paid for the road through the Tiff district. There will be other uses that have been really beneficial to us, and I'm really excited to see you vote for this amendment. We need her name and an address for the record.
Yep.
Hershey Hershup, eleven Sterling Lane. So, so good.
Thank you. Any other public comment on this one?
So I would like to read one that came today via email.
Oh, yeah.
For the record, you can have mine. So this came from an individual named Brett Brock from thirty-four Leonard Street. He wrote, good afternoon, I wanted to write in support of the two tips and the new transit oriented tip and the modified I was going to attend a hearing this evening, but I felt ill this morning and wanted to keep my distance. Good idea for everybody, right? After reading through the mechanism of tips, I struggle to find disadvantages of creating this new tip in South Berwick. I've seen economic revitalization successfully executed in Western Central New York where I'm originally from. When you see tests and economic development grants being distributed around the state, I ask why not us? I haven't been here long, but I can see the value of having a fund to improve things that are aging sidewalks and downtown facade without raising taxes. I either go to Dover for their playground or go to Central Schools Playground. And he adds, I have two questions. The tip funding is dependent on increased in valuation or new developments. So obviously these things take time to accumulate. We may not see the vast majority of funds until a decade later. Are you able to secure bonds for projects and then pay off the bonds with the tip? I can see the obvious risk there, but I see a tip as the chicken or the egg type scenario where you need development to see increases in value, but the development is stifled without improvements to the town. His second question is, how often does the state adjust valuations? Is that a yearly event? To which I responded in the email that you received this afternoon. My responses were, good afternoon, thank you for your email. I will read it into the record of the public hearing on your behalf, as well as read my responses to the questions you have below. Regarding Tiff funding and bonds, Tiff districts initially have modest growth. With valuation changes and development growth, Tiff districts can gain significant increases in funds in a short time. For example, the current Pumpkin Town Tiff district is producing about four hundred thousand a year. And if all Tiff funds are not expended each year, the Tiff fund can accumulate and be able to fund large capital projects later on down the road. Bonds that are issued that qualifies to expenditures can be paid annually on a pro rated basis. One of the most important concepts to remember is that the town will be able to shift several general fund expenditures and fund them out of the Tiff districts like salaries, economic development operations, capital and infrastructure projects, prorated fire equipment, among others. Answer the question number two regarding state annual adjustment. The state does an annual evaluation adjustment for main revenue service services certifies to the Secretary of State the full equalized value of all real and personal property, which is subject to taxation under the laws of May. And if I don't have to read it the second time for recommendation, the same message will be iterated at the next public hearing. Unless you want me to read it again.
No, that's silent in the record.
Okay, perfect. Just wanted to make sure I didn't have to read it again.
Uh, any, any comments from the council? Um, I did just one of my yes, please, um, onto page two C in regards to the name, you'll see that's where we address the name change and it is one word, just to put the council at ease.
Oh, no, I was just making sure the public understood we were changing it from one to two because there's been confusion on that for a hundred years and so forth.
Understandable. Thank you. Last call. Any other comments? That's one. All right, I will go ahead and make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed for a year. Um, question, we're at six oh eight, do we have to wait until six fifteen to start the next one?
It's outside that way.
That's what I thought.
Take the pause on the whole and just turn back on the other one.
If you would just unmute us to me, to me, so I think that'll be. All right, it is six fifteen. I'll go ahead and offer up a motion to open the public hearing posted today at six fifteen PM for the South Berwick Transit Oriented Omnibus Municipal Development and Tax Increment Financing District Development Program.
Second.
Your motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes four zero. The public hearing is open at six fifteen PM. And to provide a little bit of context here, this specific Tiff district and the application for it, the application has been posted online in the supporting, supporting documents for tonight's meeting. This is an application for entirely new Tiff district, whereas the one from the previous public hearing was to amend an existing Tiff district. And any other color or anything?
I'm also.
You all would like to add? Right. I'll go ahead and open up to the public. Any comments from the public? Please, you would just stand and state your name and address?
Yeah. My name is Phil Monday, community Y. I live at twenty-four Liberty Street here in town. And good evening. Nice to be here with you. So I'm here to speak in support of the Omnibus Municipal Tiff. I think along with the comments that we got from Brett Brock earlier, that economic development, why, why not us? And I, two items though, particularly concerning. Number one is the pedestrian access and pedestrian issues, the sidewalks, the crosswalks. Living on Liberty Street, pedestrians is a pedestrian. We are a bit cut off because we have to cross Portland Avenue to get to the sidewalk to get up street. I'm not saying that this is something that we need a tip for, of course not. But it is an example of the fact that there are a lot of improvements that need to be made to make this a safe area and an inviting area for economic development. And that is to allow people to walk freely from one place to the other without fear of their lives. So that's the other thing that I think is really important that I have development is the trail system. We have some really beautiful natural resources hereabouts, particularly the San Fork River for one. And this is definitely a draw for, for tourists and could be developed in a number of different, different ways, different directions. But I think that the trail systems hereabouts, while we have some, some good ones, certainly good stance and improvement. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm still Hershey Hershup, and I still live at eleven Sterling Lane in South Berwick. And I just want to say I also am in support of this district. Again, a huge benefit to the town, lots of money. I really like that some of it might be dedicated to salaries especially, and then I know we've added a lot of staff in the last few years, and I think that's been nothing but terrific for both the town, the planning board, and you know, watching toward enforcement for all has been really great. So I really appreciate this effort to add a new Tiff district, and this is going to be fabulous.
Any else?
Yeah.
Please.
So just to reiterate the big picture again, and just for the public, it might be listening. So I'll go back again, when I started, that's what this was, the direction of the council was. You know, amongst the other things was to look at the tax rate as well as to, you know, move the town forward for the next ten years. A comprehensive plan is on the list. Take care of personnel, financially keep the town silent, a few other projects. Shortly after I got here and a quick assessment of town, you know, the first issue that jumped out at me was tax base, which instead of, in most communities, they strive for a sixty, forty or fifty, fifty business residential, we're ninety, ten in business. So that, that was the plan that I informed the council to go forward with, do that. We looked at the best opportunity, the best options and talked with Jen many meetings was in the council support was to get economic development into the town, do that. We needed a way to fund all that. To, to do that, we brought Denise on using Tiff money from Pumpkin Town. With Denise being here, she came on, she's been on since September. Her first order of business for me was to redevelop the Pumpkin Town tip and then address the second tip. The purpose of the tips, exactly what you talked about, is Jen runs the town day to day, looks at the staff, operations day to day, pays the bills day to day. I look at what's going on five years, ten years and fifteen years old. This tip today, what we're voting on tonight is going to have us the impact to move forward for the ten, fifteen, twenty years old. Like Denise said in her email to Brett, you know, there may not be a capture tomorrow. There, there will be because we already got ten years in tip from Pumpkin Town. But the transit tip, which will encompass, encompass Main Street the years to come will help us pull our heads out of the sand, so to speak, and be able to give us the ability to have a downtown revitalization plan, enforce the comprehensive plan, help with things like trail system with imagination of increased staff, better services, better delivery of server, customer services for the community, which is what we're here for. And, and cost savings and the idea where we can apply Tiff money to both capital and expenditure line accounts to offset those for the regular budgets. So in every community, this is how economic development begins. This is where it begins and moves forward. And just in a short time, we had a staff meeting this morning and Denise reported that she's already got one confirmed business coming. And she's been talking with six other businesses. That's what we want. That's what we want. That's what we need here. That's what we want. That's what we need here. Whoever is going to turn this around. We need to bring business here. So and and the ideology will be that business and change is going to come. We're better off if we control the picture and we say we do it the way we want to, so it looks right. The downtown sidewalk, right? The 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 trying to preserve green historic, green, green space, the historic district. So if we control, we get the funding and we put the money in the bank. Then we control the changes on the pictures going forward, but we've got to have that plan to go forward. We've got to have something that I'm just looking at today. And that's what all this Denise is here for, I'm here for. You know, we strive to do good, great things today, but we want to strive to do great things in ten, twenty years now. We want Main Street to be a safe place to walk, to be that that beautiful little Main Street, looks like a Hallmark kind at Christmas time. That's what we want. You know, we want that so that people want to come down Main Street, people want to talk about so forth. They don't want to just drive through it in a hurry to see how fast they get through traffic. So the whole purpose of all this is the large economic development picture for the town so far. To help the citizens and the community get funded in a proper way, so we vote. The least expensive expensive, the least expenditures to the taxpayers possible. That's what the big program, that's what this is. And I appreciate the council's support in letting me, you know, do things like hire Denise, to see the vision, bring us here. And the taxpayers don't realize what you're doing and the idea, some of them do, but most of the people go back and forth every day to work without any ideas what you're voting on. And then the voting you're doing today, come back and look and see what you did in fifteen, twenty years from now. Look at the sidewalks, look at the walkways, look at the the trail path, look at the staffing levels, look at the. And even on the planning board, the planning board has a huge piece in this, them being progressive and have an open eyes to see the future. And that's the only way we're going to grow and still have that expansion affordable to the taxpayers. And I'm just, I'm excited about what's coming for our town. Thank you.
For the record, the same definition from Brett.
Thank you.
Yes, please go ahead. Just like to highlight one thing about the transit TIP is a little different than regular economic development municipal tests. So the state statute. Has value in acreage caps on how much of your town you can put into a TIP district. It's five percent. This is obviously a very large district because it's the whole basically way of Route two thirty-six through South Borough. Transit is a exception to those acreage caps and that valuation cap. So if you are doing a TIP district along. A transit corridor, which we are here, we're meeting that statutory definition. So. That is not getting us closer to that five percent. So that frees up. More land in the future that becomes desirable and that economic development is happening, value is being added to. To go into that five percent where this transit district is not taking up space in that area.
Sorry, could you just state your name and?
Sorry, I should know better. Amanda Muffa, I'm from Bernstein, chair of one of the attorneys that worked on the TIP development programs.
Thank you so much.
Sean is.
I have Sean as other half. Got it. Thank you for coming tonight.
You're welcome.
Any last takers?
Yeah, I just have a couple of clarifications from a couple of questions that have been asked. Of something that's just a little concerning for some of our residents is that when we're looking at the project costs that have been generated. The salary and overhead and operations, we're looking at between like eight and ten million dollars total. So the concern is, is we understand that this is not a you wave a magic wand boom, we get all of this money. This is a long term. You know, solution to what's going on in our town. So the concern is, is that when we do generate funds from these TIP districts. Is it going to be that we're just continually paying the salary and overhead and and operations costs? And. I know you cannot give a timeline, obviously, of when we would start being able to attack the sidewalks or, you know, the rehabilitation of our town. So I think they're looking at. I think what needs to be explained is when. The definition of an estimate is this is just an estimate and we have to inflate numbers because it's worst case scenario. And then the second part of that is why would we shift? Where salaries are being paid from if there's already, what's the benefit of shifting them to being paid out of the TIP account?
Sarah, if you may, and Mallory, if you're okay with me addressing the answers.
Yeah, yeah.
Be happy to do that. All right, so so I took notes here and stuff. So as far as the estimates go, it's it's sort of like. Throws a lot of people. So just so you'll know, and and the reason why I throws, it's a thirty year estimate. So you take the original, like if you're going to spend fifty thousand a year, you multiply it by thirty years, and then you got a whole different number, and somebody looks at you, oh my gosh. Okay, so so I totally understand residents and appreciate their concerns because those numbers look pretty, pretty overwhelming, right? And so that's, that's the estimate. And so and then and then so but before I talk about what's going to happen for the salaries is that the council has full control, here's the cool thing. Has full control on an annual basis about what it wants to prioritize. So if your sidewalks are most important priority, your connectivity is most important priority, the capital infrastructure is most important. If it's salaries, you get to call the shots on that. Okay, so it's on an annual basis, you will be presented through the budget that Tim and Jen present. You will have the control over saying, this is great, we're going to pay this side of test, we're going to pay this side of general fund. So you're in complete control based on what you get for feedback from your your constituents. And number two, so I hope I addressed the estimate thing. So that's just like an overwhelming number.
Absolutely.
So it's just like a hundred thousand a year times thirty, sounds like three million dollars, and you're like ouch. Well, you know what? You will never generate the amount of money that this whole development program, so you have to put it in there. So the state approves. They don't care about the numbers, they just want to make sure that you have had some mindful thoughtful approach to your annual costs. Annualized over thirty years. Okay, so that that part's. And then why would you want to shift salaries? Simple math is this, if you can fund twenty-five percent, for example, of Tim's salary, twenty percent of Jen's, you know, a hundred percent of mine. Whatever you figure out for the parade benefit, if you're losing seventy cents on every dollar, you would want to put as many qualified expenditures. Out of the TIP revenue in order to not pay that out of. So I mean, Jen and I figured our formula and unfortunately, unfortunately, it's not at the top of my head, but. Kind of sort of doing the math is like if it's going to cost you seventy percent more. To find Jen's twenty percent salary, you would want that out of TIPS because it would cost you that much more. So let's just use a signal, for example, the signalization, let's say that comes before you, let's say that's a nine hundred thousand dollar project, you have money accumulated in the other TIP district. Nine hundred thousand would be nine hundred thousand out of the out of the TIP district. Multiply that by seventy percent, and that's what it costs you on the general fund to raise to pay for that signal. So that's, that's the rationale behind all of that. And it's a little complicated math, but. Does that answer your question?
No, absolutely, absolutely.
And it's a very, very valid concern. I knew that once people saw those columns about the annualized, annualized over thirty years. It would freak anybody out, myself included.
So. That on that, not a trip, I know. So in a lot of towns, what managers will do is get TIP districts. So then we can continue to pay the employees a. A wage that we attract the employees and keep the good staff here. But I can't do that on the. It's hard to do that when I got to do a cost of living increase, we're going to do salary adjustments, we're going to pay the police equal to, so. What should be police departments offering fifteen thousand dollar sign on bonuses? I'm not offering a sign on bonus. I don't have that. So what we do is in order so that we don't impact taxes terribly high. We can, we can still get those pay raises, but we can take the ones like mine, twenty-five percent of my salary gets paid from the TIP. That twenty-five percent chunk of change now can be applied to the police department's races. So instead of that, just coming off the backs of taxpayers, comes out of this tip. And and we we will get the win-win without increasing the taxes of that payment. We accomplish the goals of financial improvement without doing that. So. It saves us money in different areas because we're capturing a hundred percent of our TIP, TIP dollars, as opposed like Denise was saying. We're only capturing thirty percent of reality out of the expenditure accounts in the budget. This way here, we take some out of there. Gives us a place to. Pay for it in another place without raising taxes.
We just have to be careful, we're not spending it all on salaries and not infrastructure. Go that way very easily.
Well, and and so we care, just so you know, that's a good point, John. So I want to see, so. You technically can't because what there is, there's a formula that you want to elaborate a little bit. To each position, the only one that can be, I think, funded a hundred percent is yours.
Correct.
Everything else is a percentage rate. So you can't, there's, there's a formula that we have to do, so.
Oh, I understand, but if you pay twenty people twenty percent, it still adds up.
Yeah.
Right. Do you know what I mean? I mean, you can split it out, any way you want.
Right, so so to answer John's question, other than the point you're on, I know you're throwing these points out, I mean, it's tough, but that's okay.
My job.
So. Out of that, each position, so we can't go out and pay. Fifteen percent of a police officer's salary and say he's got something to do with TIP district. Doesn't work that. It has to be tied into people who work on the TIP, who do work for planning, who do specific things. So it's very specific as to who would want and how. Mine, some of hers, some of mine, all of hers, some of code, some of that stuff, some of planning. It has to be specifically tied into. The TIP district, it's not just, I can't go out and say I'm going to pay the fire chief, well. You know, and again, here it, there's a percentage of how much they they have to have some connection to each other to pay them, so.
Understood, but it still goes back to if we're paying Denise's salary, all of it, twenty-five percent of yours, twenty-five percent of Jen's, twenty-five percent of somebody else's. We can still be spending two hundred thousand dollars a year out of a TIP.
Oh, yeah.
And pay salaries instead of a hundred thousand to pay salaries and the rest to go into whatever infrastructure we want.
Absolutely.
It's just one of the things we got to watch and be careful of, and I know you are, I'm just voicing what. You know, man. Playing the other side of the.
In response to that.
Yeah, my response to both John and to manager Pellerin is that is that. On an annual basis, we get to call the shots. The budget gets produced and if you decide salaries are lower priority and you want to spend money in capital, that's your your call to make on the annual basis.
Hundred percent, however, I have now hired everybody and I have to pay them. So either I take it from TIP or I raise taxes. Once you're hired, we hardly ever fire people because we're in a budget crisis. So. It's just be careful where we're spending it. It's just a frugal knowing letter in me.
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of promote the comprehensive plan and when we are looking for feedback from constituents. Last January or January of twenty twenty-two, this year, we walked down the path of updating our way out of date comprehensive plan with instructions from the chair. To kind of weight things as far as importance and dollar value to the community. So when we're looking at a budgeting plan, we are going to have a comprehensive plan that's going to be updated. It will be a roadmap for the town council. That during our budget cycle, we can take a look at the things that the community has prioritized. In general, I think it's really smart to, you know, have Denise up here, have Tim up here kind of informing us and and giving us up to date on. Why a TIP is important, why we should keep these dollars locally instead of letting it come to the state.
Any other comments?
One more. The the residents were just wondering if they will have any input on businesses that are entertained to come to the TIP district. I think their concern is. They don't want to see another Green Mile in South Borough here, that's with the surrounding towns, and I know that's a hopping business of. The marijuana industry and everything, and there's a little concern that we're just going to do what we can to bring. That any business is better than the right business for South Borough. Are we do as residents understand that we need to grow or we're not going to, nobody's going to afford to be able to live here. So it's one of those things of. Do we, are we, would we entertain a Walmart, you know, would we entertain these big box stores, or are we going to try to just entertain? Businesses that still are, keep us the small town feel, but with. With dignity, I guess, is the only word I can appropriately come up with.
What do you want me to do?
I can start.
Go ahead.
So again, a lot of what you're referring to has to do more with land use than it has to do with with economic development. Number one and number two is we will be coming forward in the next month or so about conducting market analysis, which actually involves completely the public's input. About what's an accepted use and what is totally welcomed in this community, because the last thing I want to do. As your economic development professional is to bring a business that is going to have to shut its doors in three to five years. It's a lose-lose for the community. For the business owner and for me and for you. So there's nothing to gain. And so if it's not an accepted talk, for example, a Green Mile. It's pretty loud and clear and and people have come in the office and asked about it, and I've said. Not a great idea. And so if you paint that message, it's it's a quick no. Right? And so if the community supports certain types of businesses, and I've worked in communities that absolutely no way of seventy thousand square foot big box isn't accepted. And guess what? There's no seventy thousand strip like big box. And so and then I've worked in other communities where that's welcome. And so it just depends on what fits. And the bottom line is is I'm here to help. Work or increase business. Ability to to establish a business here, but not something that's not supported by the community. Okay, so Tim, if you want to add anything to that.
So the answer to your question is already, it's already done. So a long time ago, and again, it's far, far away, the citizens of Happy South Borough made zoning. And because of that zoning in the new land use ordinances, that really directs and controls what we can do now. The mistake that's been made, and John can attest to this because he's been here all these years, and so can Hershey, we never updated that. That's the problem. It's going to be, it should be updated every five to ten years. They haven't done zoning updates here in years, but so the, for instance, no, we can't put a big block store down Main, on Main Street, it just, it's not in a zoning ordinance. Anything that would go here that would be built here would have for us have to go in front of a planning board. And it has to meet the zoning requirement. So the the answer is really, it's already done. They had their say years and years in the early eighties. John, when did they make the zoning, you remember? You were here, so don't back out.
I lived here, but I wasn't here. You weren't paying attention then. I really wasn't paying attention.
This, the land use ordinance, with Hershey's wife chair of the planning board, so thank you for your service to the planning board, Hershey. The land use ordinance, which is a big section of our code. Very clearly depicts where and what can be built, when and where, and it all has to be approved by by through the planning board through processes of. And they could have a public hearing, they can require site plan visits, they can do all that stuff for them. Just like the public has you as the council has since you have asked these questions. The public has the planning board to do the exact same thing to control the businesses that come here. So the process is already in place, the checks and balances are there. And as we move forward, those will be there. What's the piece that's missing is exactly what Denise said. The market analysis for us to tell us, no, we don't want to do another mile of strip marijuana thing, we want some different businesses. What are those businesses? So we need a market analysis to help guide us there. Yes, this fits, no, that doesn't. So. You know, we're on the right path, I think, to to get that, so we don't waste a lot.
So in the end, we just need to reiterate to our constituents that. They do need to become involved with the planning board process, especially if they want to. Have their say in what kind of businesses will be here and what will not. All right, I'm done, Mallory.
As it's always been.
Yeah.
But they never show up.
Right.
Show up.
Any last comments? All right, it is six forty. I'll go ahead and make a motion to close the public hearing for the transit oriented TIP district. Second, your motion in a second, and all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes for zero. We'll go ahead and close the public, we just closed the public hearing, and we'll continue on with our regular council meeting. So. We have four councillors present, Jeff is out of town today and obviously isn't here. And our first order of business is approving the minutes from December fifteenth.
Chair, I move we approve the town council meeting minutes of December thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. Thank you for coming, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Your motion in a second, any discussion, any edits? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes for zero. Next, signing the charter warrant. Uh, next signing the charter warrant.
Chair, I move, we sign the charter warrant and the amount of two hundred and thirty-three thousand five hundred and sixty-two dollars and eighty-one cents dated twelve twenty-two twenty-two.
Second. Thank you. Um, all of the, any discussion or, yeah, any discussion? Um, all those in favor, sign the charges warrant from December fifteenth, December twenty-second, sorry. Uh, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes for zero, thank you. Um, next we have our reports and presentations. Peter Paul is here um to talk to us about our audit.
Is that my cue?
It is, yeah.
Hand up some reading material.
Thank you.
Council. Good to see you.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you for having me.
Thank you.
All right, um, well, thank you for having me in this evening to talk about this most recently. And should I be standing or sitting?
You can do whatever you want.
I'll just sit and we'll have a fireside chat. So thank you for having me in this evening to talk about this most recently completed uh financial statement audit for the town. South Borough, this is for your fiscal year that just ended on June thirtieth of twenty twenty-two. Um, and before I say anything else, I just do one in which everybody happy holidays, happy and safe holidays. And we're right in the middle of holiday season, so please enjoy with family and friends and be safe. Um, in the packet that I uh just handed out directly are four documents. So thick bound book is the actual audit and financial statements themselves, because our opinion on those financial statements. Uh, tucked in there, uh, you have a copy of a somewhat colorful little PowerPoint summary.
We've got that PowerPoint up on the screen too, for.
Oh, great. Excellent. Yeah, so a little bit home and from elsewhere. That's great. Um, and then behind that. Uh, there are a one-page internal control letter and then a four-page letter of required communications. What I was going to do was focus primarily on the uh PowerPoint presentation. Which is really a very high level summarization of your financial condition and your results of operations for this most fiscal, uh, most recent fiscal year. Um, but if at any point you want me to stop and shift gears or dive into the detail in the. In the deep uh financial statements, I'm scared to remember the two communication letters. Um, more than happy to do that. Don't be shy. Um, so with that said, I will turn to the second page in the PowerPoint handout. And um, here I just wanna really provide a very high-level summarization of the, the audit process and the results of uh this audit. Um, and and I would just start out by saying that, thank you, Jennifer. Um, as, as has been the case, uh, really since I've been working with the town, but, but particularly since uh. Uh, frankly, Jen came on board. Um, management was extremely well-prepared uh for the audit and that's consistent with what. Uh, recent experience has been. And and frankly, that, that I'm saying thank you because that frankly makes my job. Uh, a lot easier. Um, I'm not that it, it'd be still a lot, a lot of work, but I, I don't wanna underplay it. But uh, as I'm sure you can imagine, you know, we have some plants where you go in and you, you know, you spend a number of days just. Trying to get a trial balance that balances or, you know, so um, being as prepared as, as you are um every year is, is a, is a big help. Uh, to us and really to the audit process itself. Um, in terms of the, the timeline that we followed, we started our. Uh, fieldwork or audit procedures, uh, second half of uh September. Uh, followed up on some pending items uh subsequent to that. And then that led us to where we are now, where we have the audit completed and uh the statements prepared, the audit report prepared. And, and issue. In terms of the results of this audit, the single most important thing that I can, that I would call to your attention and what I would share with you is that. As, as had been the case, for as long as I've been working with, with South Borough. Um, you are, you are receiving a clean, unmodified opinion in your financial statements. That is exactly what you would want. It means that your financial statements are materially, materially correct. In accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. Uh, in addition, I, and and this kind of goes back to my uh earlier comment about management's preparedness uh for the audit. When we go in and do a financial statement audit, we're not performing an audit of your internal controls. And we were doing, we were working on general motors audit, we would actually do a separate internal control audit. But with the municipality of this size, we're, we're not required, and and the practice things don't permit us to do um. An actual uh audit of internal controls. That being said, if as we go through our, our regular audit procedures in terms of auditing the financial statements. If we identify any weaknesses or deficiencies in your internal control structure, either in terms of. Uh, how they were designed, how they've been implemented, implemented, or whether or not they're, they just don't work, frankly. Um, we would uh, we're required uh to share with you as the governing body in writing. Uh, a, a delineation of what those weaknesses are. And there are two categories of internal control weaknesses that would get reported. The less severe is what's known as a significant deficiency and then like, the, the, the more severe is a material weakness. And if we come across either of those types or levels of internal control deficiencies, we would, that one-page internal control letter that I, I referred to. Would actually probably be a two or three or four-page letter where we would spell out the, the deficiencies that we identified. But uh, and and really the purpose of that one-page letter is simply to say, we didn't find it. Um, and uh, so that is a, a huge credit to the town and its management's finance function. Um, in terms of the internal control field, well-designed, well-implemented. Um, one of the other things that you find is you, if you, you know, go through the, the four-page letter of required communications, which. I'm happy at any point to dive into that, but let me just say right now, it's, it's ninety-five percent boilerplate. Um, and and in fact, the only time it isn't boilerplate is if there were, if, if there were some real issues of, of one sort or another. Um, that being said, it is an opportunity and we do use that letter as a, as a placeholder, as a, or as a place to. Share with uh management and governance. Um, even though we might not have identified any control deficiencies that had to be reported. Um, if there are any other observations or recommendations that we might um have as we go through the audit procedures. That's a good place where we, we can communicate those to you folks. And uh, we, we do have uh a couple of items in, in, that sort of fall into that category. And you can see them spelled out in the, in the four-page required communications letter. But um, really, nothing of any consequence. And it really relates to, and and I heard you talking about your comp plan update and sort of, sort of in the same spirit as your comp plan update. Um, you know, South Borough for years and years, years, has had a very, very robust set of all sorts of policies. So, you know, county policy, HR, personnel policy, um, all very, I thought, they're all very carefully crafted. Um, and adhered to. Um, that being said, policies, just like anything else, can make you grow old. Um, and they certainly deserve a periodic, you know, refresher. And um, there are two items in there that, that I, that I spelled out. One is a fraud prevention and fraud risk uh policy that I think you folks are working on that. Um, and that doesn't have to be too elaborate, but the other thing um that I am suggesting. Uh, is that you take another local purchasing and procurement policy, which I think. It's probably ten or twelve or fourteen years since it was last really revamped. Um, and the reason I'm saying this is this. Um, you folks received um a chunk of ARPA money during this past fiscal year. Uh, the expenditure of that money really was split between a, a couple of different fiscal years. And, and what's, what's relevant about that is that, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think that the actual base fee. Of the ARPA money was above seven fifty, I think it was like seven ninety.
Ninety-eight.
Seven ninety-eight. So if you had spent all of that ARPA money in this past fiscal year. We would be doing a very different presentation tonight because not only would we have a financial statement audit that would be presenting. But there'd also would be an entirely separate, and I may be preachy before you may know all about this, but we'd also be presenting. Uh, a separate federal compliance audit, uh, which is triggered by um. Essentially, if you spend more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of federal financial assistance in any one fiscal year, which you did not. And, and historically, you haven't even been in, you know, that's never even been uh, uh, anywhere, we never even close to that. This year, we knew we got seven ninety-eight, but it was expenditures were split between two years, but it did get me thinking. Um, and I, I took a peek back at your procurement policy. If uh, if you should ever find yourself subject to a single water. It would really, really be good to have that existing procurement policy, which is very, very well crafted. And frankly, is in some ways more stringent than what the feds would require. But um, it would be good to go through that policy and update it in terms of. Frankly, using the terminology that the feds are currently using in the uniform guidance. And I think it's really gonna substantially change much of anything in terms of what you're doing. But I think it'd be good just as a, you know, to forestall any kind of concerns down the road. If you ever were subject to a, a federal signal, you, you'd wanna make sure that you had a policy that, not only in terms of, but also in terms of the garbage. Was reflected with what, what effectively what it was, so. Um, but those were, those were the two, you know, advisory comments we had. Terms of, terms of the uh recommendations. So uh, if I go to the, the next uh. Slide here, what I've done over the next, the three or four um slides is really just take your financial statements. And call them down into some very, very, very high-level buckets, just so you can kind of see where you stand and what the year-over-year trends are like. I'm gonna stop for one second and just remind folks who may remember this from prior conversations or may not. One thing to keep in mind when we're looking at these financial statements and when you uh enjoyed your, your evening reading. Uh, going through the, the statements. Um, for some time now, governmental entities have been required to essentially use two entirely different sets. Of accounting standards or bases of accounting when they present their financial statements. The first two financial statements in, in the audited financial statements are what are known as government-wide financial statements. And they're all encompassing, they include all the funds and activities of, of the governmental entity. But the key to, the key thing to keep in mind is that they're prepared, they have to be prepared. Um, on the full accrual basis of accounting, which is the base of accounting that frankly, General Motors would use or any other, you know. Uh, reasonably sized business. Essentially, what it means is, you, you're not concerned about cash flows per se. You're, you're, you're recognizing events, financial events, when the underlying uh circumstances. That gave rise to those financial transactions came into being. The rest of the, of the financial statements that a governmental entity currently has to prepare are fund financial statements, which are generally presented on. A different basis of account, uh, modified accrual. And that's much more like cash basis accounting, the way of a small business, a small retail shop might operate. And I apologize for being long-winded, but I just wanted to make sure we keep that in mind. Because this first tab is focused just on your government-wide uh statement of positions. These are uh full of cruel-based uh numbers. What I've done here is, is looked at first, your, your total current assets. Those are things like cash, accounts receivable, tax receivable, um, prepaid expenses, things that are either already are cash. Or can be converted into cash within a relatively short period of time. Um, and you'll see that that, that total of, of current assets grew by about uh six hundred thousand dollars. Over the prior year, and most of that growth was seen in cash, frankly, uh, both in terms of general fund cap and also with respect to the ARPA. Uh, unexpended cash proceeds that you would receive. Um, your long-term or non-current assets, which are primarily your, your property, plant and equipment, buildings, in, uh, infrastructure and so forth, vehicles, equipment. Um, those also grew in total by about one and a half million, which is the result of really two partially offsetting things. One is outlays on new capital assets, but then diminished by current year's depreciation expense against that pool. Of, of assets, but the net of those two was about one point five of an increase. Your current liabilities, which are liabilities that are expected or required to be paid out within a, a short, uh, within the near term. Essentially, one year from the date of the uh financial statements. Uh, grew by about three hundred thousand dollars and that's almost entirely attributable to. The portion of your ARPA money that you've received that hadn't been expended. So we, we defer the revenue essentially, create a liability representing the unexpended portion of the uh. Of the ARPA line. Um, everything else was very consistent with the prior year. Your long-term liabilities, which are liabilities that are not due to be paid out until sometime after one year from your balance sheet date. Uh, actually grew, uh, uh, also grew uh somewhat, uh, as you took on new debt. Uh, primarily in the form of uh some significant capital leases. I think there were four that were entered into this past year. It was a new bond for uh highway building, if I recall correctly. Um, offset by uh payments you made against uh those principal balances. The residual of those two items, assets plus total liabilities is your total net position of your, your equity. Uh, and that grew by about one and a half million dollars, so very strong performance financially uh for the town as a whole. Uh, the unrestricted component of that, which is a portion of your total net position that is not subject to any external stipulations. Or limitations on how you spend those resources or how you use those resources, actually is very consistent. It was eight point eight million dollars. This year and eight point eight million dollars last year, so uh, so consistency in terms of that. But a very, very strong balance sheet uh at the government-wide level. On the uh next uh page, now we're, now we're dealing with fund-level financial statements, so different bases of accounting. Uh, and here we're uh focused solely on the general fund. Obviously, as you know, that's the fund that most people are most concerned about. Uh, total assets in the general fund grew by about six hundred thousand dollars and most of that, again, is in the form of cash. Uh, your total liabilities uh grew by about a hundred thousand dollars, not, not a lot of activity one way or the other there. So your total fund balance, uh, again, assets less liabilities, uh, grew by about uh. Five hundred thousand dollars, uh, and the undesigned portion of your fund balance actually grew by rounding up, actually, those are six hundred thousand dollars. Again, very, very strong uh financial position in terms of the uh general fund. On the next tab, and this is a, a grossly simplified, simplified presentation of all of your other governmental funds. Here, CIP, your reserves, your special revenue funds, uh, ARPA, all, all the other governmental funds, which are detailed. Uh, in the uh audited statements themselves. Uh, pretty consistent levels here as well, your, your, both your, your total assets as well as your total liabilities of these other funds combined. Uh, grew slightly and your total fund balance grew by, I think, less, actually less than a hundred thousand dollars. So a pretty stable uh activity in terms of the other governmental funds. You know, on the final tab in this handout, um, we're looking at. Uh, the general fund and how the general fund performed both uh against prior year actual results and also against the current year's budget. Uh, and this information is, is, it comes right off of the, one of the schedules in the, in the financial statements. But what you can see at the end of the day is uh that you had actually budgeted from a budgetary perspective. For a use of fund balance of seven hundred thousand dollars, and I think that's been consistent in terms of how you, you operate your, your budget and your commitment every year. Um, but the actual results were uh a surplus. Against that of a positive of six hundred thousand dollars, so about one point three million dollar total favorable. Performance of actual revenues versus budgeted uh revenues and actual expenditures. Uh, budgeted and expenditures. Uh, and that's, that's fairly consistent with the prior year's uh increase, which was six eighty-six. It was down a little bit, but, but, but overall, a very strong uh operating result from a, the general fund's budgetary perspective. Uh, but but overall, a very strong uh operating result from a the general funds budgetary perspective. Um, you know, I've. Uh rattled to a lot of information very quickly, um. But I didn't know if if at this point, uh are there any particular questions that I could answer? Does anybody want me to walk through the? The detailed statements on any level, um really happy to go in whatever direction you folks might wish.
The only comment or I guess question that I have is um with the recommendation to update certain policies and you spoke to those.
Yeah.
I feel like the past several years that you've come and and given us this update, that that's been similar, but the policy, specific policies were different, like one of the big ones is our. Whatever you call it, the employee policy or. The like personnel policy, that's the word I was looking, and and you didn't list that, because I know we've been making progress on that, right?
Right, exactly.
All right, I just wanted to make sure that that's.
Yeah, I mean, we, you know, and as I said, the thing about policies, especially when you are have such a, you know, a. Uh, very involved set of policies, um, you know, it's probably something that. Any entity would always be in the process, you know, it's going to be reviewing something, you're always going to be up to do something, and. The two that I listed really were the ones that that came to mind, primarily the the procurement policy, I think that's something that would be worth taking a look at.
Any questions, Ken?
So I just, first, I just want to thank Jen, um she did a great job. She she closes her door and hunkers down and says, put sign that don't disturb me, mother, mother, yeah, they'll come to you quickly and. Well, I am quietly sneak in my office through the outside window. Uh, but I want to thank Jen for all that work. Uh, and I want to thank Peter again for for his work and, you know, we even found a couple of things that, you know, worked with us on adjusting and. I think the big thing is, no surprise, um not only the financial policies, but the personnel policies and the procurement part. All policies, you know, they they just, they just do, and we see this, it shows up not only in our financial audit, but also in our personnel, day-to-day operations and. All kinds of other things, and so, but I just want to thank Peter for his time and his effort and uh. Ultimately, in the end, this is a great audit because I've been in town where we've had. Twenty-five denotations of. Of liabilities noted, when you're sitting there and you're just going through each one, you're like, oh, God. And uh so for us not to have any and have increased our our savings account and, you know, then what we're doing is working.
Now, the the lack of questions, again, it's a reason we went, we've stayed with you, right? You do a fantastic job and there's no. There's no questions because what you do is, what you present and what you do is fantastic, it's just.
Well, you're being very kind and I appreciate that, but but um.
That's staff.
Well, no, I get I get the staff, yeah, yeah, you've done a fantastic job, but again, the way you present is why it's.
But.
The audit's good, we're good.
Well, I appreciate that, John, thank you, all the, and I really have always enjoyed working with you folks. So, thank you.
Yeah, thanks for coming in, Peter, and uh Jen and the staff, I mean, every time I've had you come to one of the meetings, I feel like. It's sort of a very similar story, you know, like it's not, it it to the, not to say that it's like, to the extent that it's like. Boring, but it's all good, like no, no significant issues, and so thank you, Jen, and the staff and Peter for, I guess you.
Well, thank you, um, and, you know, auditing um and audit reports, that's one part of life we're boring is.
We're going to be bored to death.
Well, trust me, I could do that. I would. Do I let you?
Yeah, you're, I mean, you're welcome to stay for the rest of our potentially boring meeting.
I I should probably.
Yeah, thank you for coming in.
Have a very safe and happy New Year.
So, that's great. Public comment, anyone want to speak to anything that's not on the agenda? All right, um, under new business, um, we have action on the two uh two TIF districts that we previously had um. Or earlier this evening had the public hearings for, and I know there's very specific language that we need for these, and I just want to find it.
We're just going to pay for underpass.
Don't, don't, don't put that, do not put that in somebody's mind, Hershey, come on, we've already talked about a roundabout. Flying cars like the Jetson's app would be great too, but.
All right, so um regarding the amended TIF district um that will be renamed Pumpkin Town Business Park Omnibus Municipal Development and Tax Increment Financing Financing District Development Program. Um, the recommendation is to approve and accept um. That application so that it can be submitted, this seems possible to the state, um so I'll go ahead and make the motion, um. I'll offer up a motion to approve the council order adopting the second amended and restated development program as presented for the Pumpkin Town Road and CMP corridor Omnibus Municipal Development and Tax Increment Financing District. Hereafter to be known as the Pumpkin Town, one word, Business Park Omnibus Municipal Development and Tax Increment Financing District. Second, thank you, um we have a motion in a second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes for zero. And up next for the second TIF district um from our second public hearing, um. This is the South Borough, the the new TIF district that we're proposing, the South Borough Transit Oriented Omnibus Municipal Development and Tax Increment Financing District Development Program. And the recommendations to approve and accept the application, approve and accept the application to be submitted. And so I'll offer a motion to approve the council order designated the South Borough Transit Oriented Municipal Development District and adopt the development program for the district. Second, we have a motion in a second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes for zero. Thank you both for all of your hard work on this, uh we're looking forward to hearing what the what the decision is, I guess, from the state.
And these applications are submitted.
We're gonna, we're gonna be fighting up the project, we have the draft minutes that will be presented, we're gonna button up the entire proposal, probably getting up there the first week in January.
I would think, yeah, we just, we need the um draft minutes and then a council order. Um, we'll get the application, but, and we didn't send it by certified mail overnight and. Hopefully they'll look back to us quickly.
Yeah, it's just a reminder that we had already had a pre-meeting with the state, so they had gone through a lot, I mean, not to say that they're not going to come up with some other questions, but primarily most, everything has been addressed. So, we were hoping that it's in plenty of time for Jen to start her uh budget process and be able to motor along with that.
Yeah, yeah, typically it's about a two-week turnaround um to get technical revision back, there's always technical revision. Lawyers just can't look at anything and not touch it, and I'm saying that as one. Technical revisions, um, but once that product gets going, it's really very quick. Um, and our our team luckily has well worked on getting those back to the state within two days.
Great, well, thank you. All right, uh new business number two, um accepting a couple of resignations from the library advisory board. It looks like David Gagnon um has opted to resign from library board as well as Mark Dutra.
So, I have some concerns. Have we done? Exit interviews with any of these people leaving the board? Can we?
Because they're appointed by the town councils, then on the my authority jurisdiction control. I did ask why they were all leaving, and they said they've all put their time in, it's just time for you to change.
Don't buy it, but okay.
How many people are left on the board?
Two.
Two.
I believe there's going to be new applicants next meeting.
Next meeting, okay. Oh, you do, okay, okay.
The 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 council appoints them.
Understood.
They're not, they're not under my jurisdiction, I can't, if you want to do, send something up.
Yep.
I believe Lisa said that they have been there for a very long time.
They have, and they've they've done a lot for the community, and I understand serving your time. Been there, done that, planning on leaving, but. Just seems strange with a math exodus of three, two that have been there for a considerable amount of time, that all of a sudden, there's new people that want to do it, so we're gonna move, I just. I I, we've changed library directors.
If we've got.
Just curious.
Yeah, if we, how how many applications do we have to? I mean, I, I guess I'm hoping to 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 think that it's, there's finally some interest in in getting some new folks on board.
Which would be fantastic, if that's the reasoning, but.
And we should have those applications for our next council meeting, right?
I haven't seen or 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 heard when General received library, but talking to Lee, because I asked that question. And Lee said that one of the issues that came up, so the library has become very, very active, a lot more review and toward act. He wanted to get the the advisory board more active in the library, and I'm not sure. That.
Yeah, understood.
Very, that they said, listen, we've done it, just want.
Could be a lot more time requiring.
The exact reason why you're staying next year, right?
Yep.
You're staying on the board, you're staying on the council, you're running for real.
Nope, nine years, nine years, nine years is my time, I got it.
So just like that, I think that's what they said, and I think.
And I understand, but again, I'm leaving after the fulfillment of my term, it just seems very strange to me that these people that have been. Active in the community role, one of them, basically for her entire life and mine. I'm just curious, and that's why I asked, and I understand why you can't ask, I got it, we can, we can talk about it, maybe do something as a council, just just ask.
Yeah.
Since we appoint them, maybe we should, to people that leave, just ask, hey, is there something we can change and just.
We'll do that for you.
Correct.
We're gonna do that for you, trust me, I can do you.
I'll be open and honest.
I know you hate me already, you've already told me three times.
I did, you don't, so on that note, Madam Chair, I.
My question, oh, are you making a motion?
Oh, come on.
No, real quick.
Okay.
Um, so these are, they're requesting immediate resignation, this is not, they're resigning at the end of their term, is that correct? Just so I understand that.
Mister Mister Gagnon is, wants his resignation whenever someone can replace him.
Okay.
Uh Mister Dutra, I do believe, has already left.
Yeah. Okay.
But they have no term, they're there for as long as they want to be there, we don't give them a term, right?
Okay, well, because I'm on the town website, it does give years um where their term would expire.
For library?
Yeah, so uh Mike would be uh twenty twenty-three, Hilda would have been twenty-three, yeah, so.
The whole like renewal thing every.
All right, yeah, it's good, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, so that was my second question is, um, when would the month of the term be?
It's usually June.
It's in June, yeah.
Okay, except forget, we do those all in the group, so it kind of melds in, my apologies.
No worries.
I was wrong again, but I don't owe anybody a condolence coffee this time.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know.
Madam Chair, I move, we accept Mister Gagnon's resignation from the library advisory board whenever, when a new member is recruited for his position. Can I do this a double, you want to do a single?
I think we can do one.
Okay.
Is that, can we do one motion?
Yeah, you can do one motion. And then we'll, we accept Mister Dutra's resignation immediately from the library advisory board.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, thank you, um any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes for zero. Uh, next order of new business, um considering the sale of town property located at map three lot thirty-seven. C, um, just to know, um. Um, according to our code, chapter A one fifty, exquire property, um. The, we essentially have the authority, I guess, to um. Consider selling the property, a number of different ways is listed in our code, um selling a property to an abutter applies, which I think is what is being proposed here. Any other? Stuff that should be added?
He's the one who bought another lot a couple of months ago, so he's the one doing the composting, so he's just expanding his area. Um, and buying land around him, we would obviously check with the other abutters, I know it's on the map, just to make sure there was no other interest before.
What road is this on?
It's it, there isn't.
I know, and I don't, I don't.
I can't figure out where.
Is this, is this the one up that I thought, uh? Whatever the road is up, which.
And the map I provided unfortunately does not go far enough to include.
It's good, Jen, it it's not really relevant, I was just curious more for myself, I'll look it up later.
Okay, it's close to the York line, I do know that.
Madam Chair.
Yeah, you're gonna stop. Stop jumping the gun, um do just a procedural question from the newbie, um where I imagine Mister Watts reached out to the town.
Yep, his emails.
Yeah, I saw the email, so my question is, is do we have to reach out to Leo and Terry and who are the other abutters to let them, so that is the next step. So we are just voting that we would be willing to sell the land, and then the next step would be, we have to reach out to the other abutters?
Yes, I will send them a letter and give them a deadline to contact us if they have any interest at all.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
And then if in the event one of the other abutters is interested, then.
There is more than one abutter, a selection will be made by lottery.
Oh, I agree, there's a, we have a defined process for that.
Yeah.
Okay, um, if we get a mo, no.
No, no, I was. Done after this one. Madam Chair, I move we allow the town manager to sell lot zero zero three, tag zero three seven, tag C, in accordance with tax acquired property A one fifty-eight, tag two, A two.
Second, thank you, we have motion in a second, any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let's have score zero. Um, I think that takes care of all of our business, um that we have, what's going on, come in guys.
Well. The highway, the past, the past weekend storm. Um.
Yes, for this past weekend.
Yeah, there are eight public works employees, seventeen hours each. Um, so December twelfth or eighteen, they sold it involved twice, two and a half hours each time, the first storm had. Um. Am I in the right, was I in the right one?
That should just be something, something twice, it takes two and a half hours to solve, which time they solve it.
And with the first storm.
They salted from the start.
Yeah, thirteen hours in, the site was so narrow, thirty-three hours. So. Police, uh they used two hundred, they've used two hundred and fifty-six tons of salt so far this winter, which is average. Police department in the last two weeks has had two arrests in Christmas State for domestic violence, six accidents, forty-two traffic stops. Uh, mid-January, a site tour is scheduled to finalize the accreditation through the state of Maine, law enforcement accreditation. Which is a huge piece for us, especially when we're trying to sell businesses, having accredited police department. Fire department, they had sixty-one calls, um near today, uh four hundred and fifty-six calls, or about fifty calls. Part of the sixty-one calls were all Friday and Saturday with the storm, and they stopped the fire station for about thirty hours during the storm, so. Kudos to the fire department, kudos to the public works, fire groups, PD, everybody who was out, uh they handled a lot of calls and a lot of running around. Law enforcement has had two building permits, full plumbing permits, twelve inspections, and they sent out two violation letters. Planning has two projects on the table, four oh six Main Street, San Villa Estates. The libraries have been flooding on Friday during the storm, um in the basement, we, it was from the way a gutter was placed, that was fixed. And it was dried out, public works, it all went took care of that. The developing the best book list for two twenty twenty-two, there are about fifty books so far, library has on hand for the best book list. Uh recreation, new sessions begin January, such as Zumba, yoga, art, music and science, ski programs are filling up quite quickly. And the seniors Wednesday was senior Christmas lunch and Yankee swap. Assessing last week, the assessing sent out three hundred and thirty-two approval letters for the property tax stabilization. Assessing last week, the assessing sent out three hundred and thirty-two approval letters for the property tax stabilization program. Which the state still doesn't understand how it's going to work and what we're going to do and how the increase is going to go. This is great. Just saying. Wrapping up, the, she set up GIS online mapping. Um, we anticipate adding a link to the website, public can access the GIS, walls questioned and correction that come in from the property owners. Uh, and she's continuing to review the sale and process the determination of our certified ratio. Town clerk, as we reminded, Kathy Peterson is retiring again this week. And we've advertised for her position. Um, transfer station has been busy, they were busy Saturday morning before the storm. And they're still considering compost. And economic development?
Economic development, she, Denise has been working with several businesses, as we had mentioned earlier, two are new constructions, one would be a property acquisition. And she's talking to another woman who wants to bring into a new business into where the pharmacy has closed, so it'd be good if we could get someone in there sooner rather than later. And she's working on different grants for the town and all the different departments. And she is building up the economic development page on our website as well, so we'll make a live with that, so have her own page and whatnot. Um, we received a five thousand dollar donation specific for CIP fire equipment. Uh, from a couple, they had come in and like, this is what we want to do and how to go about it and they were just thrilled to do something for them, very, very proud of it. Um, as you know, we're already starting to work on this little twenty-four budgets. Uh, Great Works Internet will be moving forward finally on getting all the fiber to our buildings. This was scheduled to be done in August, but as most contractors unfortunately are running a little bit delayed. Um, they're finally moving forward and we'll be able to now get it from the pool to the buildings. And that was a contract we had signed the other last, so to reduce the cost of our phone and internet. We are working on annual reviews for all staff. And also working on getting quotes for the boilers, we have only received one so far. We have some contacts there to try and get more.
Boilers, let me tell you about boilers. So let me take you on a history trip real quick, but I'll bring you back, John, it won't be long, it's only take two minutes. So in nineteen ninety-six, the town said, let's look at a new heating system for the town office. They said, yeah, good idea, and now I've got prices. And then the prices came back and they all looked at it, oh, that's way too much. And they said, okay, well, yeah, it's an old steam boiler, eating low pressure steam eating.
Very old fashioned.
So they said, great, tell you what we'll do, we'll just upgrade the burners and we won't touch the boilers and we won't take out all the old steam radiators and run hot water pipes, we'll just leave all that. So that when this guy, Tim Pellerin, shows up in twenty-twenty-one, he can get sued by this. So here we are in twenty-twenty-two. And we are trying to find anybody who can purposely explain to me, and they go, what? You want a what? We need a low-pressure steam boilers. Nobody, they, they don't make them anymore, what was it, all the seventies? Yes, well, we need two of them. Huh? And we've had more contractors, right? We've had contractors say, good luck finding that.
Yeah, I talked to one contractor at the end of last week, he called me right back to tell me that there's no way they could work on such a system. And that there, he knew of a guy in Rochester was one-man band and he's really, really busy, but maybe you could get on his list. Oh, how's a one-man band going to change out two huge, huge loads for a three?
So just so you know, we're, we're working on following the financial policy, getting increased quotes. We do have a quote from Gagin, from Gagin, but I don't want to make public yet because I want to see the other folks. So just, you know, again. There's nothing I can tell you.
public stones.
Well, have, if nobody can help us, are they at least making alternative suggestions of, hey, we can't do steam boilers, you need to move to this?
No one's, all's I've asked is to replace some steam boilers.
Yeah.
See. So here's the problem, the, the, the stuff you end up in is now a major, major innovation. To replace the heating system, to take all the old radiators, all that means you've got to run plumbing in all three floors, you know. So if you're talking, you know, you just, we don't even want to go there, we don't even want to ask that, I, I don't, I would cry, I would sit in my gusping, cry. So just, there you go. That's the steam boiler story. We're trying, we'll come back with more information. And I do the ten Great Works.
Ten with Great Works Land Trust is submitting the application to the state for the funding for the land on the San Pauls River. So we'll know more once he gets that application back.
Um, on Saturday, we opened a warming center, community center, this past weekend, I went down, I self-acquired the main director. We kept it open to eleven o'clock, going to the sign, I said, if you need help load the fire station. So there's some issues that developed out of that, I'll be working on administratively, on how it works and how to, we're, we're going to update the policy that's open. So somebody left the sign up and then it was just, if anybody needed help, they could just go to the fire station because it was staffed and manned. Somebody did show up on Sunday, the Fire Department was actually out. And EMS took care of her and warmed her up and took good care of her, so I appreciate that. Um, but we need to improve and work upon the emergency management policy on opening warming shelters and how it's going to work. If any of you want to be shelter volunteers, there's an online class you can take and we can line you up so that during a disaster, you could be a shelter volunteer. For hours if you want to sit there and welcome the public, I'd love to have that and get you trained. Jump right in, John, I know you're going to plan that.
I have to stay home because when the fire chief is out, someone has to fill his generator. So I failed on that this weekend, I was not home when he needed me. I think his dad did it, but I have to be home to fill the fire chief's generators. That's important.
Love him, won.
I, I know, I need to keep his wife happy.
Okay.
My neighbor.
I'm working on finalizing the area for the current town hall project. I came in on the, the storm, we had the snow, it was wet, like, wet cement, I rode the drain for a couple hours. Came in, rode around town, it was like following, like watching concrete come off the plow, wet, just.
Stasty.
Yeah, and he was, he was having trouble pushing, it was a lot of weight there. Your gambles is working on a lot, a donation letter to send to South Berwick residents, ask for donations for equipment needed for the embals. Um, I've met with, I've been sitting in with Denise on the economic development, on new businesses coming into town. Working on the FY twenty-four-year budget, personnel staffing reviews. Um, and I'm going to be appointing Ray Delco, the assistant fire chief, as a part-time townwide safety officer. It's right up his alley, it's something he can do, he's retired now, Pratt and Whitney, he did a lot of safety stuff at Pratt and Whitney, so. His wife said he needs a project, and there's a good project for him, but he'll benefit us greatly. And he's going to be working with all the town staff, he's going to be organizing a, a townwide safety committee with the staff. They'll be doing meetings monthly, reviewing accidents and injuries and creating policies to help us make sure we're safer. And he'll also be available with lots of different job sites and work sites and answer family labor questions or anything the staff asks or concerns with problems, so. And that's all I have.
All right, and council on more comments? John?
Uh, wishing everybody a happy New Year. All have.
Not told me I was talking too much tonight, so I got nothing.
Oh, I just had a quick question about the steam signal on Portland Street, we moved down. It looks like it's been removed, you mean?
Yeah, they said they were going to take it.
We take them out for the winter because the, they get beat up by the winter weather, and it's so cloudy so much, they don't work well. We take them out and we put them, but we'll put them back into the spring and they fill.
Awesome. Um, the December twenty-sixth comprehensive land committee meeting was moved to January ninth, we're reviewing the downtown chapter and the arts recreation chapter. Um, I just, Peter gave a really consumable presentation, and I wanted to thank him, but I also wanted to thank Jen because I know how much we're putting those blinders on and really getting in through the weeds and, like, a phenomenal job, super appreciated.
Thank you. Um, the only thing I had is just a, a question, have you guys heard anything more from the state on two thirty-six and ninety-one, when that's starting? I'm, I'm obviously not, I have to, but, okay, I was just curious.
It's whether it was.
Yeah.
I had worked out that this week was between the fifties and the.
Hey, 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 I want a fish. I was on ice yesterday.
Crazy.
Um, that's all I had.
Madam Chair, I move we adjourn.
Second. We have a motion in a second, I'll do your favor, I say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Chef.
Really?
Yeah. I'm drilling all.
Uh, I have seven thirty.
There was.